What is going on beautiful people? Welcome back to the 817 Podcast where we talk about the lovely city of Fort Worth, Texas. We get into politics, business, culture, news. If it impacts you as a Fort Worthian, we discuss it. Ann Zeta has arrived back from the great state of California.
Just in time to be frozen to death. I looked at that weather forecast and I thought I should just stay out here a little bit longer, but then I, I looked at when the peak of the cold was gonna be and I had stuff I had to be back here for anyway, so I couldn't postpone coming back.
I know it's a random, but I'm headed to South Dakota for work this weekend, which is why we're recording on Friday. And I looked at the weather there, it's a negative 11.
So I feel like- Are you gonna have to be outside? That, I think that, uh, do you have clothing for this?
Um, I'll figure that part out, but, um, but what I'm really worried about is like a three hour drive to like the school district.
Hopefully that's a place where they have the equipment to clear roads and do all the things that need to be done.
If, you know, I'm like the revenant and Leonardo DiCaprio fighting some bears and I don't make it back, that's why. Cause I was in the snow, grizzly bear attacked me and you know, um, I didn't make it back, but I'm glad you're back. I know you missed.
I know. I felt like I missed a lot. That, that FOMO was kicking in hard.
The kiddos.
When I make a plan to go on a trip, I don't know everything that's gonna be happening until I'm gone and then some of that stuff pops up and I have to miss it, but it was worth it. Cause like you said, I was visiting my kids and my mom and that was fantastic.
Yeah. And we had the 817 Gather and honestly, what was exciting for this 817 Gather, we had a lot of new people that showed up. Nidia, our, our emcee and kind of host of the 817 Gather crushed it. She did a great job. And, um, yeah, and people were just talking about how much they've enjoyed the show and all the interviews we've had. And I was like, honestly, it's really, people think we're like very strategic, but it's honestly like, people gotta come to us and then know somebody, know somebody.
It happens very organically. I, I feel like, and part of me feels sometimes like we should put more effort and energy into planning these things, but because we base what we talk about oftentimes on things that come up in the news. I don't think that there's a way to do that and still continue to be kind of true to the way that we do this podcast. And we've been really fortunate in that these interviews have been very organic. You know, you and I both out in the community, meeting people at various things, having a conversation about how we met this person or that person. And then usually you following up with actually reaching out to the person and inviting them to come on, so.
Well, we wanted to go ahead and dive in into our three short stories, the one big story, then wins and losses. Today's big story will be an interview with Jason Ballman for District Three. Uh, these three stories we're going to go through is a plethora of stories that people have shared with us on our Discord server. So shout out to all the gatherers who are out there sharing stuff and keeping us accountable to build a quality episode. Unfortunately, there's so much stuff, we won't be able to dive into all of it. Uh, so you guys will have to keep your guys informed as well with the details. But our first story, we're gonna kind of have a general one on health. We're gonna, we're gonna move into education and development and then, uh, the big story with Jason. So let's go ahead and move into health. Health here is a big one. Uh, just from like, if you look at the, the flu season that we had, just as a country, right? I mean, like, let me go macro really quickly and just say like, the number of deaths due to flu surpassed the number of deaths from the coronavirus for the first time ever last month. According to weekly data from the Centers for Disease Control Prevention. Um, according to the CDC spokesperson, the week ending of January 25th was the first time the percentage of deaths due to the flu was higher than the percentage of deaths due to COVID.
Yeah. Knowing several people who've had this flu A that is seems to be going around, it seems pretty terrible. And Jim actually got sick right after I left town. Thankfully I kept my distance and have kept my health. Um, and I'm not sure exactly what he had, but, uh, hopefully that doesn't get, keep spreading, but that flu has tended to be pretty severe. Another thing that was shared with us on the Discord was, um, looking at 2023, 2024 Texas kindergarteners dropping below 50% getting the vaccine for measles. And we have had some serious measles outbreaks in Texas as well. So these are all just things to keep in mind when one is, um, not listening to science and following doctors' recommendations for things that can be preventable and can lead to death when the steps are not taken in order to prevent those illnesses.
Yeah. So I mean, this is kind of the, the basis of what we want you to get here is that there is data coming out showcasing when you don't trust vaccines, more outbreaks are happening. And it's preventing kids to learn more successfully. And some of this data that we're showing you is that we're seeing also is that a lot of this is from private schools. Where, um, vaccine rates for the measles, um, is, is much lower. And, and, and so because private schools don't also have to have, uh, those bases. So what makes this interesting to me, Ann, is when we talk about school vouchers and state vouchers, are we gonna be holding these private schools accountable to also then be able to need to have vaccinations? Um, if you're gonna take on more kids and pull more kids from the public school system? Or again, why is this a better education if my kid's now more likely to get measles? So I just think the overall piece here is that when you now have a leader of your health, uh, uh, for the country, all the way down to us today, um, here in locally, don't trust vaccines. This is where we are and this is what happens. Uh, you can't, you know, we can't even get the flu in control. Uh, and now the flu is having more deaths than COVID cases. Should be talked about more, but because of the constant blitzing of the media, we never get to actually see the ramifications of not having proper leadership. Because the thing that they're keeping us attractive on is the constant new crap that they keep posting about. So you never actually hear of the failures of their results when their old actions, uh, have now expired.
Yeah. It's a little frustrating, I would say. I know, I'd heard that the flu vaccine, this go around didn't cover kind of what this flu A is. And that can sometimes be the case where varieties of an illness that there is a vaccine for doesn't hit exactly covering the type that happens to be more prevalent in that time period. Um, but again, I think that it just goes back to the question of when you have medicine and science that can help protect us. I, you know, looking at coming out of COVID, I feel like more people are staying home when they have illness. And so that has been a positive thing that we're not kind of hopefully reverting back to what it was like before where everybody was just like, oh, suck it up and go to school or suck it up and go to work, even if you're feeling ill. I think now we all look at each other with a little kind of side eye when we hear symptoms. And I think that has been a positive coming out of being more careful.
I will be wearing, yeah, I'll be wearing a mask headed to South Dakota. Like heck, I might even wear the mask on my three hour drive. So, you know, by myself.
All by yourself in a car? I don't think that's quite required.
Um, the other, the other piece of like going back to like the impacts of decisions leaders make and the impact it has on people. Uh, ProPublica had another story around healthcare. Uh, Texas banned abortion, then sepsis rates soared. Uh, ProPublica's first of its kind analysis is the most detailed look yet into the rise in life threatening complications for women experiencing pregnancy loss under Texas abortion ban. Pregnancies became far more dangerous in Texas after the state banned abortion in 2021. Uh, ProPublica found in a, in a first of its kind data analysis, sepsis shot up more than 50% for women hospitalized when they lost their pregnancy in the second trimester. The surge in the life threatening condition caused by infection was most pronounced for patients whose fetus may still have had a heartbeat when they arrived at the hospital. ProPublica previously reported on two such cases in which miscarrying women in Texas died of sepsis after doctors delayed evacuating their uterus. Doing so would have been considered an abortion. The new report shows that after the state's ban abortion, dozens more pregnant and postpartum women died in Texas hospitals than had in pre pandemic years, which ProPublica used as a baseline to avoid COVID-19 related distortions. ProPublica's analysis is the most detailed look yet at a life and a rise in life threatening complications for women losing pregnancies after Texas's banned abortion.
So basically just getting back to when you allow legislators to make decisions about health. And when you threaten doctors with going after them for actions that they might deem to be the appropriate medical action and threaten them with, you know, imprisonment or losing their license or something, then you have people making decisions under duress and possibly not making the right decisions.
My wife kind of talked about how abortion bans are pressuring doctors to diverge from the standard of care and reach for less effective options that could expose their patients to more risk, like getting an infection. Um, and you know, this abortions are a staple of maternal healthcare, uh, and can be life-saving. Uh, doctors insert a straw-like tube into the uterus and gently suctioned out any remaining pregnancy tissue. Once the uterus is emptied and a, and can close, usually stopping the bleeding, but because DNCs, which I guess is a scientific term for kind of abortions, she kind of talks about are also used to end pregnancies. The procedure has become tangled up in state legislation that restricts abortions. In Texas, any doctor who violates the strict laws risks up to 99 years in prison. And, and another point she brought up that I thought was mindful was the cost of dealing with sep- sepsis as a, as a state is actually more cost-effective. I mean, no, it's more expensive because of now, once you have this, to, to manage a patient who has an infection, uh, is very costly compared to a more proactive sense of care. And so it, it is also, which is a very smaller problem in this whole topic, more expensive to the state to be handling, uh, maternal health this way.
And I guess they're saying that there's a new imperative to review the abortion law in this legislative session. Um, and even folks that championed it in former sessions are identifying the need to clarify the language because doctors don't need to be in fear of being penalized if they're, um, thinking of the life of the mother being at risk. But this is also something that infuriates me because when you put laws in place in a state that only has a part-time legislature that meets every two years, that you've got to wait for two years and have these negative outcomes for two years before the legislature gets back together and then decides to tweak the language to try to make it better.
Yep. And if, and if you don't remember, um, there was a Joselli Barnesia who died in Texas after waiting 40 hours for a miscarriage care. This woman died of sepsis. Um, the fetus was on the verge of coming out. It heads pressed against her dilated cervix. She was 17 weeks pregnant and a miscarriage was in progress, doctor noted in hospital records. At that point, they should have offered to speed up the delivery or empty her uterus to, to stave off a deadly infection. More than a dozen medical experts told ProPublica. For 40 hours, the anguished 20-year-old mother prayed for doctors to help her get home to her daughter. All the while, her uterus remained unexposed to bacteria. Cause of death was sepsis. So you're just having massive pressures and fear of doing the right thing for people who are in emergency care and need, uh, proper leadership. That's ran, like you said, by trusting the doctors who go to school for this education and not now them being feared of being sued.
And apparently last session, they didn't even allow public hearings about it. So it's been four years.
Yep. Yep. So, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move into short story two. Um, short story number two is the plethora of news about education. Uh, obviously one of the big updates is Superintendent Molinar at Fort Worth ISD, who was the interim, had was now, is the staying power leader at the, at the district. Um, they've done some events. They talked about the first ever district-wide, uh, parent engagement conference. As well as I think this is good for all of us, for us on this pod, talking about how I think Fort Worth needs a leader who comes from Fort Worth and really believes this community and district and, uh, Superintendent Molinar is one of those. But let's be clear, we do not want her, um, I guess nomination, uh, to distract from the, all the other things that are going on in our Fort Worth ISD schools.
So there were a couple of articles, um, on the fact that there has been, there have been some other issues brought up at the school board. And some folks expressed a little frustration that the naming of the new superintendent kind of overrode some of that. But I watched the school board meeting and then read some of these articles as well. So there was a CBS news story about parents rallying to save Fort Worth ISD schools from closure. Um, there was an announcement after a presentation to the school board that there were like 25 or 28 schools that were being considered for closure or consolidation. I watched the entire presentation and it's my understanding that these are all just listed as possibilities. That if one thing is done, then others come off the list. If another direction is followed, then you know, other ones will come off the list. So never has it been all 25, 28 schools are at threat of being closed. And clearly at the school board meeting, and I think the last two school board meetings, there have been parents from the various pyramids and the schools that are on this list advocating for what is good and what is working well at various ones of these schools. They're definitely gonna end up having to make some tough choices because enrollment has gone down. Um, and I just think that it's important to stay on top of it and know that if they're identifying schools, even if their enrollment is down, that are having positive outcomes, that all of these things need to be taken into consideration when making these kind of tough decisions. Um, but I feel really like the whole citywide, um, or district-wide parents, um, PTA meeting that they had. Um, I think all of this is kind of moving in a direction of getting people more involved and engaged in our schools, even if they don't have kids in those schools.
I think a big part that to me noticed when I looked at the schools that are on the list, it's gonna be interesting to see which schools close and which of those schools close and also already have a charter school on, in the community. Because to me, um, this, when I read this article, I saw, wow, these charter school networks are playing chess. They are seeing the data, they're seeing the projections and they're making strategic investments. And, and today it is not fun to be a charter school with all the other competitors. But I think this is the data that they're looking at and they're looking at and making bets what schools are going to collapse. And so then for their on this, in, in the wing to then fulfill those communities. And, um, I don't think that should be a part of the decision when we decide which schools to close and not. Cause now the district is saying we're closing this school because, oh, well they have a charter school there that will be able to service them. That is a concerning, um, a concerning game.
I mean, they always described charter schools in Fort Worth ISD at least as being partners with Fort Worth ISD. Because they get some of the funding and all of that. So you would think that when we're looking at these things, that that would need to be a consideration.
Yeah. Yeah. But-
Other options.
Yeah. But what, yeah.
Or not.
Yeah. 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 And, and what I'm-
Or whether those other options are failing themselves.
Correct. There you go.
We've seen a couple of those charter schools closing and consolidating themselves.
Yep. So it's, it's an interesting, to me, just shows the power dynamics of, of people and of institutions. And I mean, as a guy-
It's also frustrating because nobody is the boss of everybody. Like the ISDs can't dictate to the charters. The charters can't dictate to the ISDs. Which also brings us to another article that the Fort Worth Report had talking about Tarrant County government is now stepping up to help boost reading rates. So again, we have another entity that, I mean, I think we should all be interested and concerned and stepping up to try to help out. But I find it interesting that all of these organizations that don't necessarily have a direct responsibility of these things are now doing these very public press conferency type of things where they are saying, oh yes, this is a problem. Um, and so Tarrant County Commissioner Manny Ramirez sees reading as the key to preventing crime. And right now the county is facing a literacy crisis where half our children can't read on grade level. So this is something that the school district has acknowledged and been talking about. The city has acknowledged and been talking about. And I guess now the county has decided on February 19th that they're committed to helping school districts boost literacy. And the commissioners unanimously approved a resolution outlining the county government's support and issuing a call for action for all 20 school districts to introduce plans ensuring students can read at grade level.
I'm tired of this literacy conversation. What about, okay, if you're gonna look at those 20 schools, why didn't you talk about funding? And keeping the state accountable to those public schools? Why didn't you talk about any of that? Um, you, you're, you're, the, the problem that I get, and I, and I, and I work in education. And at this point, when I tell people about education, I work as a service provider in schools. And so sometimes our services don't hit the mark. Like we don't move, we don't move numbers. And the amount of stress that these people are under of moving numbers, I'm like, hey, you know, we have to have grace and we have to relax. Because you know who's not held to as much accountability as you, public school? The voucher program system that wastes money has proven to waste money in Florida, Arizona, and Indiana. Or the publics, or the private schools who don't have to do the same metrics or things, or a homeschool parent who doesn't have to, even their kid has to take the state tests. Everyone else is, if you stack up, how accountable are charter schools, private schools, homeschools, voucher programs? They are at best maybe have 40% of the community, uh, the accountability measures as all of our public schools. We keep telling them to change and they need to do stuff. And so like, that is one, this, this conversation is, uh, to me in, in the wrong direction. And, uh, the other part that people just simply don't talk about is the demographic changes of the students in our public school systems. Yeah. Our literacy rates are down because all of our kids are not white kids anymore. You can't measure test scores from the 2000 and, and measure them today when there, there's kids who are coming from all walks of life, coming into America and have different parents who speak different languages. And so they may not also be reading to them in the language that we choose as the one to test on. And so there's just a lot of like, to me, dynamics on this story that like, you also have more kids who know a second language. You also have kids who have more cultural richness today. Uh, and so it's just like, we also need to uplift and empower what these kids do have that we didn't have. So yes, kids from 1995 may had better American English literacy rates. But today's kids in 2025 are sitting in a room with multifaceted cultures, kids from Honduras, Venezuela, Afghanistan, Nigeria, and, and families from all walks of life. Um, and yes, are we having a literacy problem? Well, because language is also not a monolith. So you can't just have, great, you have an ESL teacher who can do Spanish, but now you have an array of different languages. So that is more difficult. So there's just so many things that are difficult about literacy. The way we measure literacy is not even tied to knowledge. It's, we're teaching them for the test. But if they don't even have context of what the difference is between civil rights and the civil war, and they think it's happening at the same time because we don't teach knowledge and context, we're not even giving kids a holistic understanding of, of history and culture. And so I'm just like irritated about this whole conversation that it feels like literacy, which started as like, is this becoming a right-wing agenda? Is starting to feel more and more like, man, if it's at this point where now Tim O'Hare is talking about literacy and everyone who's talking about literacy on TV looks nothing like Fort Worth ISD kids, I scream danger.
Well, and I'm looking at the resolution itself, which basically just identifies all of the things that pretty much all these organizations that you just talked about have already identified. And basically says, you know, bad you do better. But it doesn't say what they're gonna do to do better. They're just calling on the orga- the school districts across the nation to demonstrate, you know, that, to do a better job. We, the county commissioners, call on all independent school districts to make student literacy their highest priority and to develop and implement a detailed results-driven plan that ensures universal grade level literacy.
Here's what Molinar needs to do tomorrow. She needs to have a press conferences. Thank you, Tim O'Hare. I would like your priority in press conference and make sure no one dies in your jails. Like, okay. Um, you know, so it's, it's, and, and that's, and you know what the other thing is, what the community members are not doing? Community members are not calling on Fort Worth Independent School District about literacy. They're actually talking about implementing a policy that protects students and prepares teachers in the event of potential raids at schools by US Immigration and Customs Enforcements called ICE. What, what did you do to talk about ICE? That seems more adjacent to what you do-
What might be affecting people's ability to be literate?
Yeah. And what-
If they're fearful about going to school, so they just don't go?
Yeah. And now attendance.
Or they go to school and have to worry about whether they're gonna be separated from their family.
It sounds like county, you should make an ICE plan for our Fort Worth ISDs who are under-resourced. And all these 20 school districts you act like you care about. Well, how about you create a message in a campaign of what to do around when ICE is a part of school? And what's your opinion on what ICE should be doing in schools is when America and Fort Worth is a majority minority group of people, when you look at 15 and under.
So what did happen at the school board meeting this last week also was that the Fort Worth ISD community members called for a policy to protect students from ICE raids. So a policy differentiated from a resolution is actually action items that an organization will do to create a better situation. Not just pointing out the obvious and saying somebody else should do something. So community members are calling for Fort Worth Independent School District to implement a policy that protects students and prepares teachers in the event of potential raids at schools by US Immigration and Customs Enforcement or ICE. Multiple people shared their concerns about the current and potential impacts being faced by immigrant students during the public comment portion of the Fort Worth ISD meeting Tuesday, February 18th. And they actually came with a policy that, that the school board could just adopt. Um, and so I think that was a helpful step.
Yeah. I mean, another one, I mean, just off of that inspiration of what we've seen from Fort Worth ISD to help with a helpful step on an actual problem. Like this is something, there's just, there's actual data and research that could be done here around county jails and county stuff around, um, what can we do? Uh, for parents who are stuck in jail because they can't pay their bond. Right? Like, okay, if you care about kids getting to school and kids literacy, tell Fort Worth ISD you're gonna make revisions and supports of anyone who gets arrested in our county uh, and has kids in school to make sure that they're home to support and help their kid. Cause there's probably data that shows literacy goes up if parents at home.
Yep. So the article has the proposed policy language. Um, we won't read it all on the pod here today, cause we have so many articles to cover. But that's an example of showing up, identifying a problem and coming with a solution.
Yep. And, uh, you know, obviously there was also the horrible news of the 11-year-old Texas girl who was bullied to suicide over families of immigration status in Gainesville. And let's be clear, Cook County is not too far from Tarrant County. So don't act like these things aren't happening in our schools as well. Um, so again-
Well, our local example was a, a teacher at a school talking about ICE should come check out his school.
Exactly. Exactly. Great point. Great point. And, um, I, I, I wanna make sure before we wrap this up, that be our crystal clear that there was a city council member at this event, Macy Hill. Um, I'm wondering why do we have a one city council member at this press conference? And it's the one that I, that I also have said earlier, when we were talking about mercy culture, that I think could be the most dangerous city council member in the 21st century of Fort Worth, Texas. Uh, and it's because I think the agenda and the people that Macy Hill's job, her full-time job and the philanthropy she manages is hyper dangerous on what they believe in society. And Maddie Parker has done nothing but gone more to the right since these establishment has pit someone next to her who is similar in age, similar in story, their backgrounds, similar in physical appearance. And you'd think that was on accident. And now they're buddy buddies. And Maddie, since Macy has gotten on council, has gotten more conservative, which also means more dangerous in a lot of ways. And so let's link the lineage between Tim O'Hare and Bill Wayborn and all of this. The one person stepping out of that Tarrant County Commissioners Court is Macy Hill. And let's see where she steps into next and where you see her in Fort Worth City power. That's something we have to continue to keep an eye on. Let's go ahead and move into short story number three.
So our third story is about kind of development in housing specifically. We had a lot of talk on the Discord for the 817 Gather about housing and different types of housing. And we got into a little bit of a debate about a certain type of housing and whether or not it's a positive thing when it comes to these smaller units that are not necessarily deemed to be affordable, but are smaller. So they end up being less expensive than a larger apartment. Some folks, that's not for them, but you know, in this case, it's pretty clear that all housing is not for all people. And the two articles that kind of rose up for us to talk about today are Texas leads in the build to rent boom of the 110,000 plus houses for rent under construction, nearly 22,000 are in the Lone Star State. So this trend started happening while I was still on the council. And I will have to say that I was a little bit concerned about it because we talk about homeownership and being able to buy homes and build generational wealth. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about these build to rent, single-family subdivisions. And I think that partially people were intrigued by them because they weren't apartments. And so they were easier to convince neighboring, single-family subdivisions to not be opposed to them. In this article, they speak a lot about the fact that they were, people might be looking for more room, um, maintain conditions that are set out in single-family. Um, that you can have a little bit more room, but be in a rental situation and that might've come out of COVID. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what prompted all of this, but they literally are popping up everywhere. And we didn't even really have zoning to accommodate for them. And my hope, and it, the conversation went- And my hope, and it, the conversation went on after I was no longer on council. So I don't know if anybody else has carried on the discussion about, are these being done in a way that could eventually be like condoized so that they could be sold to like homeowners instead of continuing to be rental? Um, but this is just showing that Texas basically has a very large inventory, um, of single-family built to rent.
Yep. And, and, and when you look at it by city in Texas, units and pipeline, Fort Worth is at the top of the list with 1,816 units. McKinney is next with 1,293. Those are the only ones in the four-digit, uh, level. Um, but we lead in this, and I think a lot of the concern about this just comes down to generational wealth. A lot of people's families builds cluster of homes and, 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 and long-term homeownership that then allows it gets passed on or allows people to afford to retire. And so if you're a lifelong person just renting a home, how does one be able to do that? Especially when, uh, it leads to not, you know, it's so expensive that you don't actually are able to save money, which leads us to a Dallas News article talking about this dilemma where the gap between house and apartment rents has never been bigger. Real estate company Zillow reports that typical asking rent for a single-family home in DFW was just over 2,300, while apartment rents were just over 1,500. The 52% price gap during the final three months of 2024 was among the highest in the nation. It was the highest gap in DFW since Zillow started tracking this in January 2018. That gap widened in DFW due to several factors, according to the housing market researchers. Um, a record.
And I don't know if that rent to own mark typology is separate from just regular single-family homes that people rent out. Cause that would be an interesting thing to research and determine because those are built to rent. And so I don't think they, at this point, could be owned, whereas this is talking about single-family homes that are on the rental market that could be sold.
And it looks like, um, the pricing of apartments has, has flattened, but overall, um, the, the, the cost to wanting to get into a rental house has, has, has risen. And obviously because you renting a house, you don't need to stack the large cash for a down payment. So it gives people the privilege to feel like they're in a home, uh, that usually is hard to reach. So that is becoming appealing to a lot of people who move to Texas and Texas. A minute, if you're not from Texas and you're from somewhere else, like the coast, you think of Texas, you think, you think of space. So people are craving these types of setups also. Awesome. So now we're going to get into the big story. Our big story is with Jason Ballman. Jason Ballman is a District Three resident, a former council member in Marfa, Texas, and is running for District Three. Uh, Jason Ballman also is a professional at Texas Instruments and has experience as a crisis communication person in his history, uh, servicing, uh, emergency centers. And so we get the privilege to sit down with another fresh politician, um, running, who is just a person here in Fort Worth, wanting to make a difference. Here is Jason Ballman.
My Fort Worth story, it goes back to when I was in high school band and we made Allstate and I had a big solo. And we came to Bass Hall and it was a very, very big day for me as a musician who wanted to go to college for music and all of that. So when we all walked onto that really awesome, beautiful stage, I thought, I'm really out of my league. And I've got to start this piece as the lone soloist with nobody else playing anything around me or above or below me. And, and I had a really great time. It felt like a match. And when you feel that as a musician on a stage, it's sometimes kind of rare. And so for me, that was the turning point where I thought, I think I really like Fort Worth. I guess I can be a really good musician here and, uh, do something, uh, great with my abilities and all of that. So we crushed it. We did a really great job, um, as a band and that was Jason as a high schooler. Uh, now Jason as a, a resident and as a professional, it's a different mindset because flash, uh, flash forward to almost 20 years and um, I'm a, my trade, I'm a communicator and a marketer and I help a lot with STEM causes. And so one of the things that brought me back to Fort Worth was, uh, my job with Texas Instruments, which makes a lot of chips or semiconductors, things that are probably in the microphones we're using today. People are probably listening to this in a car or on a phone and there's probably some of our chips in that too.
Yeah. And, um, I also read that you were a council member in Marfa, Texas?
That's right.
I still, I've, I've been the big, yeah, I've been the big bend multiple times, but never stopped in Marfa. So tell me about like when and how and, and how'd you get there and?
Yeah. Well, we should've just done this in Marfa, right? We should've all just, in fact, if you're listening now.
It's a long drive. I had a friend who wanted us to come out there for an arts festival and I, we were planning to, and then we looked at the drive and I was like, holy mackerel.
Yes.
It's a long way away.
It is. It goes by fast with some great podcasts, of course, and music and a few stops in between, but I wanted to go out there for a year and try some consulting work. And this was kind of shortly after the pandemic and I wanted to see what else I could do with my career that's been largely focused on public health and safety campaigns and other projects around emergency management. And so I was out there and after about six months, I noticed in the local paper, there was a little tiny ad that said, we're basically council member needed, we're accepting applications. I don't think it actually said quite that, but it kind of felt like help wanted, right? And I didn't know how this would go. I wondered how many people would apply and how many people I knew who would also throw their hat in the ring. And the reason that it was by appointment or by interview is because that seat was uncontested and nobody else had run for it. And I had never thought that living out in Marfa, I was going to get involved in politics. And I wondered who are the big players in Marfa and Presidio County and West Texas and Far West Texas. So you start to think about all these contexts. And I went to my interview, submitted my letter and I went to the interview. And it was in a, a session and I came out of it and wondered what's gonna happen. They deliberated down other agenda items for a long time. And I feel like, and you've probably have felt that in council settings before, like there's the few things that you're really, really passionate about. And there's some other things that you care about too. And then there's going to be something at the very end and you're like, why don't we just start with that thing? Cause that sounds like the really cool thing I want to get done now, right? But it's a team. So they came out of deliberations and they chose me as the next council member, which was great. Then the fun really began, right? Then you have to wonder like, how's this gonna actually happen? Also, when's my first day? Uh, where do I sit? What kind of, uh, what kind of knowledge of just being a council member in the state of Texas, in the city of Marfa is there? What is, what is the Texas municipal code direct? What is, what is this Texas municipal league? That they keep sending me emails about? That sounds cool. And I really ate it up. So one of the benefits of being in a tiny town is you can still work on big problems. And you also have a little more flexibility and time because you're not rushing across great distances to get to Target or Costco or whatever it might be. And you, so you have time to kind of read through some of this and really absorb it. I also will say, speaking of the Texas Municipal League, they hold an annual conference. And because we're way out in Marfa and my partner, I needed our car for the weekend. I actually took a Greyhound bus from Marfa all the way to San Antonio. And that was the ride of my life. So we had a really, really, uh, really great time on that ride. So, um, met a lot of people and just, you know, what else are you gonna do for almost 12 hours? So eight hours by car from Marfa to San Antonio, but 12 on the bus. So.
How long did you serve?
Uh, I served for just five months.
Okay.
Before relocating back to here for a position with Texas Instruments. And I did a lot in those five months. I learned a lot in those five months, but my three proudest accomplishments were advocating for more funding for the fire department. And that required me going to the Presidio County Commissioners Court meetings and asking for it. And then it would pop back on the agenda a couple of times after that for a couple of other meetings because I had some opponents who wanted to use that money to renovate some other buildings around the county. But the Marfa Fire Department was, uh, something that I was also jointly responsible for as a council member. And people go out to Marfa explicitly to take photos of the pink fire department. It's cute. It's fun, but it also needs to be structurally sound and be a space for those that volunteer and the staff to work on the trucks. And they were cramped, uh, in the prior quarters and they needed a little bit of an expansion. And that's very important to me for, again, for my career in emergency management is making sure the fire department has what it needs to be successful. Because if they don't, fires don't get put out, right? If they don't have support, people can't respond to fires that are ongoing or emerging. It's kind of a no, uh, no-brainer. Um, so, but you're dealing with a small city and a county, uh, in general with low funding. So you have to kind of pick your battles, but this was one to definitely pick. And I'm glad that we won. And I'm glad that the new expansion opened up last year.
Where, would you have ran for office in Fort Worth if you didn't have this experience? How did you get to the point of making this decision?
That's a good question. Yeah. I wonder, I don't know. I wonder too, like what would have happened? Um, I think I've always had a calling for, uh, being a leader and a supporter in my community and a lot of the interests that I have. Um, I've always felt like if I'm not doing something for others, if I'm not doing something for my community, then I'm maybe just, sometimes I feel like I'm, maybe I'm just part of the problem or part of inaction. And so there is this kind of inner fire that I'm always kind of feeling about doing the right thing. The MLK quote, you know, there's never a wrong time to do the right thing. And I reflect on that a lot because I was in this top six parade in January, just as a participant. It was very cold. And we were out there for a very long time. And then I went to the MLK parade. It was rescheduled last Monday. And that was really nice too. And so that, that quote, I'm just, I've been thinking about that a lot, um, in this, in this race. But I, I guess maybe the, the, the best answer to your question, cause that was a lot, was, is, um, uh, probably at some point. But I wonder if I even would have been here without my experience in Marfa or my experience in Southern California or my experience growing up in central Texas on a tiny little family farm. I, I don't think I, I don't, I don't think as a 10-year-old, growing up in Resole, Texas, that'd be sitting in a podcast studio near downtown Fort Worth, talking about running for an election. I thought I was just gonna work on my farm and maybe become a police officer or a teacher.
And, and that's what your parents did, correct?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Thanks for bringing them up. They're awesome people. And they're awesome because they've kept me accountable. They pushed me to be a better version, version of myself growing up. And also they're my parents. So they took care of me when I was younger too. So that makes them really awesome. Taught me a lot of things, but my dad is a, um, police officer for 25 years. Had some really great lessons to talk to me about when we were out working on the farm. And, you know, working on the farm could be anything from, let's go check on the cows and take a nice comfy drive in the truck across a field with maybe a Dr. Pepper. That's fun, right? We all like doing that, but it could also be we're gonna go work on a, on setting up a barbed wire fence and it's the middle of July and we're gonna be out there for six to eight hours. Uh, get ready, right? And this may be a three or four or five day project. But one of the lessons that's always stuck with me with my dad, uh, he said, there's a situation on the beat today where I could have maybe just, uh, chosen to arrest someone or that could have been the situation. But that's never my MO. And so he wanted to talk to me about, you know, being a good public servant and his role and his approach to policing. And he said, the focus needs to be, for every police officer needs to be on de-escalation, protecting and serving, instilling peace. And so another way he put it was if you're a police officer and you're the first person to make an aggressive move, you've already screwed up. I really, really love that. And I have taken those lessons and how I approach others and strengthen my interpersonal connections through my entire life. And even as a wee little baby council member out in Marfa, you know, um, I made it a point to always stop and talk to the local police department and the sheriffs as well, uh, for the county and just make sure like, hey, are we getting out there to know people? Are people coming to you? Are they scared? We have a four-way stop in town. You know, that is a ticket maker. Do we need to do all that all the time? Do we need to be journeying all these tickets? Um, so that was residents' chief complaint, uh, the police pull people over all the time for tickets. And so that stopped a little bit, um, from some of those conversations and kind of the, the rate of tickets went down. Because yeah, it is illegal to, of course.
We were talking about whether we were rule followers before. I'm like, they're running stop signs and you don't want them to get a ticket.
Right. But like, are we really counting to three? Are we making them count to two seconds or three seconds to complete a full stop? And what's all going on? And how, you know, how quickly are these stops being conducted? Is this a long thing? We're trying to get a lot out of the person? Are we doing what we can to just send them on their way? I mean, there's a lot of elements within a, uh, encounter from a police officer. And here in Fort Worth, I was, I have been, um, really impressed with the two encounters that I've witnessed. Uh, they were very, uh, community-minded and peaceful. And I think that, uh, that made me feel really good about wanting to, uh, run for an office in this city. Because I felt like the, there's opportunity to work well with the police. And there's opportunity for residents to be heard more by officials like, uh, me when elected, who will uh, bring their voices to council and bring their voices to the police department. So you want to talk about the Citizen Oversight Committee? Cause I, I support it. I support having citizen oversight. Yeah.
Yeah. I did, there's all kinds of things that have come into my head to say and add to, and I think we have a lot in common and we're gonna probably have to go get some coffee sometime and not just try to do this all on the podcast. Because some of your reasons for running and some of your, you know, the first time that you ran in Marfa sounds so similar to like what brought me to do that as well, just that wanting to be of service.
Yes.
Um, and not knowing exactly what you were getting into, even as a city planner, that drinking through the fire hose kind of thing of not knowing exactly what's going to be expected of you. Um, what your full job is gonna entail. Um, I haven't dug into your background or anything. I just, I felt like you were relatively new to Fort Worth. Is that the case? How long have you been here? I know that, I believe that the area that you live in has recently be, been added to District Three. Because it used to be District Nine.
That's right. So it was kind of confusing because when I first moved here, I was wondering like, what district am I in? And trying to use the online tool to figure that out and understand who my representatives are. And I have been in Fort Worth for more than a couple of years now. And, uh, I've been back in Texas for about five years. Now, just to spell that out even further, when I was, uh, 21, I decided to pursue a master's degree. And I was at the time, I, I, look, everyone's gonna find out. I went to SMU. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had some regrets.
My husband went there for law school, so.
Ah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Look, you know, it was a great school for somebody wanting to study music, uh, but is any budding artist, well, if you're really, really in it and we talked about the inner fire and the energy and the creativity, all you really want to do is keep being exposed to more. So when I was 20, uh, 20 and 21, I started thinking about where am I going to go to get a master's degree? And so that led me over to USC. I had a distant cousin who went to USC and she talked me up all about it. And honestly, look, I didn't even, even though I'm very pro USC and fight on, and I love all the great things about USC.
My grandfather went there.
Really?
Yeah.
What did he study?
Uh, he was a, an attorney and a judge.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Great law school, really great law school. Um, but even though I went out that way, um, you know, I, I got the, kind of the first exposure of being a, um, a little fish in a big pond as a artist and that was cool. It was really nice to be like a part of this big city, which is Los Angeles. Um, and go to things like the Museum of Modern Art and kind of learn a lot about what's going on. Um, with contemporary artists who are actively showing, um, and go to even small galleries and, and then just start to kind of meander around different neighborhoods and see some really big problems, really crappy roads that up in the Hollywood Hills, they don't have those problems. They have hills, but they're nice roads that get you up into the hills and around. Might be a little narrow. It's been sung about in a lot of songs, right? So, Night Call.
What is your, uh, so with the state of kind of Fort Worth and how we fund art today, like what's, what's some people saying to you? What are things that you would like to stand up for?
Yeah. Well, obviously I've had a lot of exposure to different forms of art and I think that Fort Worth, tying it back to my story as a young high school band student, has a rich, rich, not just legacy, but active presence in the, in, in art, in the, uh, arts community all around the world. All around the world. I mean, people, it's, it's really astounding with our museums, with our organizations. Uh, I think the Clyburn competition. So I also am a pianist, by the way. That's my main instrument. And the Clyburn competition is awesome.
I just watched the documentary on my flight home, but I didn't finish it before the end of the flight. And so I've been looking for it online so that I can watch the end of it. And it said it was on the website and I haven't been able to find it, so I need to go do that. But yeah, it's something to be really proud of in Fort Worth.
Let's get on it because you know, it's, that's something that I think has brought a lot of attention to Fort Worth in a very positive way. Uh, but on the other, on the other, on the other hand, on the other hand of, uh, the conversation of the arts in Fort Worth. Sometimes you have to have really difficult, challenging conversations about what's going on. And so recently, when I saw that our county judge was trying to roll into the, uh, Fort Worth, uh, Modern Art Museum. And see some photographs, um, I was really surprised like what's going on? And I read about it and while I personally would not want to see that art myself. I question why a county judge is so involved. And, uh, I'll tell you, I told, well, I'll just tell you again, when I was in Marfa, it was a tiny town, but we dealt with big issues. It's not afraid to go up to a commissioner or a county judge and talk about something. And I'm really, really concerned about, uh, how that went down. And I understand now the ACLU as a, uh, has a lawsuit, uh, or they're pending one or threatening one, I think. Um, y'all correct me if I'm not quite right on that.
They filed, but they wrote a lengthy letter saying that they thought that things should be, have been done differently. And suggesting that there might be a lawsuit coming, I think.
Yeah, I think that just wasn't the right way to handle it. And that was an overextension of government into, uh, something that shouldn't have been that way.
Yeah.
There's a better way to lead, uh, your community and it's not through warrants and seizures of art.
You, um. You talk about how in Marfa, you went and talked to big players in the county, uh, the commissioners as a council member.
Yeah.
How would you grade or assess Fort Worth City Council members doing the same for our city? You know, based off of little things like this, or if it's the other big topics we can talk about.
Yeah.
It seems like here in Fort Worth, um, you know, the city council doesn't maybe speak up as much as maybe you had the privilege to do. In a smaller spot. Is that me giving them an out or do you, are you more shocked that like, why aren't you saying more?
I think that your role as a elected official is to definitely stand up for your community. And if you're worrying about politics too much and not your people, the working people of Fort Worth. Then that's a disservice. But I've been on council before, right? And, and this Marfa setting and I, I understand kind of sometimes feeling the question of what battles do you pick? And being surprised sometimes at questioning an expense and a budget. And had no idea that that other council member or somebody in the community was upset that you questioned that item in a budget. We purchased it for, you know, I can throw out some interesting examples, but I, I remember one time I asked about why we're buying, uh, candy. As a city, like, well, that's for the Halloween party at the library. Oh, okay. But when you look at it on a budget sheet, you're wondering like, what is this really for? And there's a little bit of language about it. Um, so I think sometimes you worry, uh, when you get into office, there's running and there's campaigning and then there's getting into office. And then there's staying in office and then there's, uh, thinking about, uh, what's the best for your community? And at the end of the day, it's not about you and it's not about the campaign and it's not about likability and polling, even though it can be that way with media. It's really about, did I do something really useful for my community today, my community today? Or am I stuck in my own head or inner, or inner circle of politics? Um, so you have to break out of that and I, I've been really helped, uh, really, really thankful to have a great partner. My partner Jake, who we kind of do that for each other when it comes to community advocacy. Or even just deciding when to clean the house, like. You know, I know you got a lot of things to do today, but come on girl, grab the vacuum.
It really does take a supportive partner, that is for sure.
Yeah.
It is a job that necessitates that, so.
Right. Yeah. So I think there's a time, uh, for you as a council member. To, to definitely stand up for community and actually it shouldn't just be one time. It should be many times, of course, but you have to think about. Uh, when to use your own platform for good. And I think in this case with, that we talked about with, uh, art museum, I was surprised that there weren't any more. Uh, council members really speaking up about this. I'm surprised that it hadn't reached council in a, in a big way. And, uh, I was disappointed that, again, that the county, uh, kind of got its way. The county, uh, county judge especially got his way in this situation. And I hope we can fight back and turn, turn back the clock a little bit. And establish a healthier relationship with the Fort Worth Modern Art Museum.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of hands-off attitude between different levels of government here locally where. They'll say, well, that's not our lane when it comes to things like ISDs or what the county does. But then clearly some speak up on specific topics that is outside their lane. Cause we're all talking about literacy now and whether the ISDs are doing a good job. So it's telling when someone chooses to stand up and speak up on a topic that is outside their specific purview. And the times that they don't. So I think you're making a great point there.
Yeah.
And then to your point also about, and EJ always talks about how I don't end these. Comments that I make with a question, so I'll try to make it a question as well. But to your point about standing up for the community that you represent. But also understanding that you're working with a group of people that you have to convince a majority of to support the thing that you're trying to bring to your community. And so not being like a firebrand where you're out there just burning it down.
Yes.
To the point where nobody wants to support the things that you're trying to bring to your community. And I think your experience in a small town and recognizing that some of that small town relationship happens here in Fort Worth. And the accessibility to electeds. So I think what I'm asking is, is that kind of what drew you to thinking that this would be something that you would be good at here in Fort Worth? As you were appointed to the role, but still, you know, serving in that role. And I loved what you said about nerding out about the municipal league.
Yeah.
Um, I, National League of Cities, I went on those conferences and enjoyed that because that was, you know, nationwide. So I think you bring a combination of the service mentality from your upbringing. And then also nerding out about the policy side of things, which is a great combination. And I did not ask a question. You were worried about being fangirly about me and here I am kind of fangirling about you.
That's why I'm just letting you talk.
Yeah.
I'm just over here like sparkling in my.
And, and is meant to always be the guest, you know, that's just how I look at.
Started on this podcast, EJ.
That's how, that's how I look at it. You, I've seen you speak a couple of times or heard, you know, like some of your messaging. Obviously you're, you're in District Three, you're, you know, Michael Crane is a very Fort Worth way, popular. Council member, you know, seen as funded, seen in the event. What, you kind of talk about how you, you, you make this through line that there's a chance, um, to kind of take on the incumbent. Because of the new lines and, and how there actually are a lot of Democrats in your area. I'd love to know how'd you, 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 you share that hope when you're at events? And so I'd love to know like your, your explanation or how'd you kind of, did you know that before you started running? Or did you started identifying that post deciding to run?
Sure. So looking at the data, which is something that I'd kind of, it kind of happened at the same time. Of wondering if, if this is something that I can, I can do. And I don't want to be just a firebrand that's out there using a platform to just, you know, throw flames and, and grow them. And that's, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm really trying to, uh, find common ground with everybody in my district. Which is, um, a lot of different people, a lot of different backgrounds and ages and interests and types of. Um, employment and, and all sorts of needs. And it's, it's been really awesome. On the three weeks we've been on this campaign trail so far, how much you learn as a candidate, how much you thought you knew. But you keep learning more and more about what matters. Uh, people's favorite restaurants and what's really pressing on their need about. Getting to work, whether it's the excessive traffic on eight twenty or thirty or whatever it might be. So, um, those are, those are great nuggets of conversations, but I think, uh, looking at the, the voter data in the district. Um, we know, we have, we have seen that things are actually more progressive. Uh, more democratic, but that's not a time to say, uh, well, okay, so I lean that way. So this must be easy. Um, it's really a time to make sure that we're me, meeting people where they're at and we're making connections. Which is what I'm doing. I've been block walking in sub-freezing temperatures for three weeks now. And I'm not stopping. And I haven't seen my opponent out block walking. And I, I think that's kind of terrifying, you know? I mean, at what point can you get too comfortable in office? And I think, uh, it's, it's, uh, the, the answer to that is there should never be a point when you're too comfortable in office. You should always be trying to go out there and meet people and hold fora like you guys do and others. Um, town halls and even small, uh, meet and greets. So I think that what's, uh. Uh, and some, I think what's really, um, important for, uh, this campaign is, uh, my focus on the working, working people of Fort Worth. Um, I'm here for you. I am trying to make everything better, our everyday experiences, whether it's roads or sidewalks or parks. Um, just something that makes you feel like my tax dollars are truly at work. I'm seeing the enhancements. I'm not getting just newsletters about construction is coming.
That is the, the headline of the email from the city often.
Construction is coming, right? Sometimes it says improvements are coming to your area, but we want improvements now. You know, I, obviously I live here too. And, and I say that and laugh because I just, I, 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 I think of all these projects around my neighborhood that have been going on and on and on. And I'm looking at, uh, our sidewalks where they sometimes just kind of happen to stop in the middle of a road. And then they jump over to the other side. I'm like, what planning problem is that about?
And I could answer that question for you because one of those projects happened while I represented your neighborhood.
Well, and you're, and you're trying, right? You know, I understand everyone's trying to do the best thing, uh, typically. Um, but I, I think like the, I don't mean you specifically, you specifically were trying and just doing a good job, Anne. No, I didn't mean like, uh, we, we all, we all are trying to bring a lot of different topics up to the city and. At times and, um, some things just get more of a priority. But I do look at the, uh, there just seems to be a lot of construction happening in the district, but it's not for everyday needs. It's not for making our sidewalks wider, smoother, more continuous, better. Accommodating people with disabilities of different types. The parks, I'm not seeing, uh, improvements there with fencing. I have a dog. A lot of people have a dog in Fort Worth. That's not new. And the dog parks that we do have in District Three, uh, seem to be lacking some critical design concepts. I think there could, could be better enclosures for small dogs versus large dogs. Um, better vegetation, uh, maybe some like toys and things, uh, not, not like toys they can run off with and, uh, what am I trying to say? Playground, playground equipment. Thank you. Playground equipment. Yeah. And that's something over on the, on, you know, off of Beach Boulevard that I like that park a lot. It's really good for a larger dog like mine. There's agility things and playground equipment for dogs and that's cool. Um, and why does that matter? You know, it's not just because I like dogs. Um, it's because also when you're looking at, why do people abandon their adopted animal? Some of these things really matter, um, for a person's ability to enjoy time with their dog, to let their dog. Burn off some energy so they're not so crazy around the house. Um, what, what lends people, what lends, uh, the opportunity to abandon the dog you just adopted? And money is another thing, just the cost. So we have these pushes, adopt a dog, adopt a cat. The shelters are overrun. Uh, here are people, here are, are animals that are on the, uh, list for euthanizing and, you know, these motivators. But once you adopt, then you have a companion and something to take care of, an animal to take care of. And the abandonment rate I'm really concerned about, I see a lot of loose dogs. Um, and there's also, uh, issues with, um, just personal and public safety there too. It's not really a, a comfortable feeling to see a lot of loose dogs, um, around. So. I, I, I go back to about how this campaign really is for the working people. It's not for luxury real estate. Uh, this campaign is not about sprawling Fort Worth out farther and farther and building luxury condos and. Um, or bait and switch practices for planning and zoning where it's kind of like, whoa, we're gonna build some affordable housing. But then you check on the project in six months and it seems to not be so affordable. So this campaign is about working people and when they go out their door. Every day for work to take their kids to school. Are they seeing improvements? Are they seeing a nicer area, a nicer road, a nicer sidewalk? A little change in the park that just makes it better. Another dog poop station, something like that. So, uh, those, those are some critical needs that a city council member can easily solve. There's some harder ones, but there's just some easy things we can keep working on, basic infrastructure.
Something we haven't mentioned, but I know it's probably close to your heart as well. Your mom is a teacher. Um, so the state of Fort Worth ISD and literacy, um, obviously that's been the big topic here. Obviously Texas and states agendas is around, uh, you know, taking out public schools and funding vouchers. What, um, what's kind of your MO of like making sure every kid in District Three is, is being educated at the best of ability in the city?
Thank you for asking that really, because I was at the school board meeting, uh, earlier this week and wanted to. Advocate for just basic psychological safety with kids in schools right now. And it's not even, uh, only about children. There are staff and there are teachers who are also. Uh, scared about ICE raids, uh, teachers are worried about their retirement. Uh, as is always in Texas, unfortunately, the sad story of being a teacher in Texas is that you're not gonna be paid very well. And that's just, just heartbreaking. My mom's been a teacher for 19 years and counting. And while she does okay, it is really sad how much the state is not supporting teacher pay. And how we have a $30 billion surplus. And the state refuses to invest back into our public school system. And instead wants to play a smoke and mirrors game on the concept of vouchers, which sounds so mystical. You, some people don't even know what it really means. I mean, I think the three of us and others who listen to this podcast know a lot about it, but don't forget that while you may know a lot about what's happening. There's so many people that don't even know. When I block walked last fall for the general election. I was really surprised at how many people truly had no idea who was running. There were people for president. People had no idea who was running for president. In 2024, in early November, days leading up to the election. And so I think as a communicator, as a career, uh, as a person who's had a career in communications for a long time, for more than 15 years. I have been, uh, always surprised at how much I think I might know or how much I'm willing to communicate. But how much to others just don't know about the cause or the topic we're talking about. Um, so my mother, being a public school teacher in Texas. I kind of feel like part of my job and, and running for an office is to advocate for all these things too. For better teacher pay, for better safety in schools. And at that school board meeting recently, dozens of parents came up to speak. Saying they are worried about their children being distracted from politics and the, and the government being their biggest threat, basically at this point. ICE is a government agency. If the government is the biggest threat in your everyday school life, that's pretty sad. Without ICE, you've got this voucher talk. Is your school gonna even be there? I mean, they're talking about closing down 25, 26, 27 schools in Fort Worth and. What are we doing? You know, we should be enhancing our schools. We should be making them better for everybody, for all, for children. And for the people that use them, like teachers and staff and parents and other stakeholders. So, uh, I think I say all that because schools are centers of communities. People make decisions about where they want to live based on schools sometimes. Sometimes school, the quality of a school might be the number one reason why somebody decided to move their family to that area. So their kid could, could go to that school. So I'm, I'm really, really disappointed in the state of Texas for playing around with kids' education.
Well, Jason, it's been awesome to have you on the pod. What would you like us to know, take us to, as this is kind of your chance to have a CTA?
Thanks. Well, join this campaign because this campaign is for working people just like me. And we were out there and we were walking around our neighborhoods. We are calling people. We are chatting it up on social media. Go to ballmanforcouncil.com and learn more about me. And that's ballman, the number four, council.com.
So that was a great interview with a potential candidate for office here in Fort Worth in this crazy campaign season.
He had a real fan.
Yeah, well, it's funny. He was, he was saying he thought he was gonna be fanning out on me. And I really, uh, appreciate his reason for running, his, his desire to serve, what brought him to be a council member. And I really, uh, appreciate his reason for running, his, his desire to serve, what brought him to be a council member in Marfa. And, you know, what brought him to the decision to want to serve in our community as well. So like I said, we can't really get into all of that on the pod and I hope to get to know him better, um, going forward. Because having people in our community that want to serve in this way, I think is something that improves our city overall. So we are going to end, as we always do, with our losses and our wins. Losses first in order to end on a high note. So my loss is that in tracking all of these resolutions and executive orders coming down from the federal government, there has been some threat of there being a pullback on funding. In the area of my concern the most, and that is transportation. So there was a Fort Worth Report article, I believe, discussing whether or not some of our big transit projects that have been our wins and, and, and the subject of many of our short stories about things that are improving for public transportation in the city of Fort Worth, might be threatened if changes are made to funding that comes from our federal government. So I'm hoping that's not the case in continued conversations with our transit authority and folks that are working in that arena. They're looking to make sure that that funding comes to fruition and that those projects come to fruition. And so my hope is that this potential loss doesn't end up actually being a loss, but it is very, uh, disconcerting and, um, stressful.
Yeah.
To watch these things ebb and flow.
I heard a crazy stat in the biz journal about just the impact of this federal government, um, just Doge's crap, uh, that quote, "From Harvard Center and Renaissance Tower in Dallas to Burnett Plaza and Overton Center in Fort Worth, the US federal government leases office space in more than 85 properties totaling to over 2.75 million square feet across the metroplex. That is roughly enough space to fill the tallest skyscraper in Dallas, plus the tallest tower in Fort Worth combined."
I think there's a lot of unintended consequences to these cuts that are just being done willy-nilly without even understanding what it is that, that they're impacting. I've read so many stories from federal employees that were just had the rug pulled out from under them in places where that is a very dangerous thing to happen. And I just think that a little more intentionality and research and knowledge and allowing people who are actually professionals in an area, a subject area to inform these decisions would be incredibly helpful. But it feels pretty intentional to kind of knock us off our, uh, ability to pay attention and be aware and counteract a lot of misinformation. I find myself spending many a day kind of trying to Google and research and be like, is this really true? And is this really happening? And people just post things as if it's gospel. And half the time, or more than half the time, I go research and find that it's not even true. And that's frustrating because even reporting things on like Facebook where they say they're not going to be doing that stuff anymore. So it's up to us. So that just seems like an invitation to make people fight even more.
Yeah.
Cause if I'm personally trying to tell someone that they're incorrect, instead of having the platform pull down their thing because they go and research and find that it's not correct as I've reported it. I think that just, people are hesitant to do that.
You have a lot more patience than I do. So.
You just probably ignore it, which is what I should be doing. It would be better for my mental health.
Um, so my loss is, uh, an interesting one. I'm interested to get, because I know I'm going to get a lot of probably pushback from the creative scene of Texas as we, as we sit in our production studio, which probably gets a lot of funding for what I'm about to share as my loss. Texas lawmakers are seeking to attract more film and TV productions to Texas by revamping the state's current film incentive program. A new proposal will invest nearly a half a billion dollars towards attracting filmmakers of Texas and boosting the economy. Texas Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick has voiced that one of his major priorities for the 89th legislative session is making Texas America's film capital. Now the state has proposed nearly 500 million in funding to establish Texas as a major player in film industry. Now, you're probably wondering, EJ, that sounds great. Why is that a loss? Well, what's not mentioned in most of the news and the media around Dan Patrick's support, oftentimes when you see someone like Tim O'Hare standing up and it looks like good, there's things behind it. Dan Patrick has voiced the reason for this is so that we can create conservative films. Now, if you look at the things that have pit Texas on blast, you know, my take on why I'm afraid of the stockyards and what the stockyards means for the Republican agenda. You can't sell republicanism, but you can sell cowboys. That next layer is not just in Fort Worth. What you're seeing is that our own Fort Worth people are taking that same model and bringing it to paramount. And what they're doing is allowing that to then to decide and to showcase where now they're going to be partnering with our people to potentially create conservative media. And so, yeah, we're talking Dr. Phil and that's a clown version of this, but I'm really afraid of this becomes a systemically thing that we are unaware of. And so regardless if, you know, I believe in funding this and I want us to fund this, let's be clear. But we must be very mindful of the films we make, the people we ask to make films and, uh, how much are they willing to have creative expression and make things that represents real America, the humanity and Texas? And that they're not trying to create conservative propaganda so that we like movies that make the way Governor Abbott and Dan Patrick and Ken Passink think as the way is the right way to the future. So I will end with my win on a lighter note, which also though is, is positive and arts as we should be supporting. Is it's, I know it was on J, uh, February 5th, the week of February 5th. Jambaloo, uh, Jambaloo was a concert, free concerts throughout the week, uh, across the metroplex and here Fort Worth and, and Dallas Music Office, uh, all had amazing shows across a couple of different, uh, concert venues. The one in Fort Worth was Tulips and I heard a bunch of people, and man, there were some outstanding artists here in Fort Worth. Rising Stars, uh, Lou Charles, one of our OG, uh, local rappers came back and did a show. So it was just a really fun week. So shout out here Fort Worth and, uh, for providing and being a part of this Jambaloo. And I hope we continue to do this every single year.
So my win comes out of my loss of having not been here last week and getting to see some of what I'm about to talk about. And that is that I see a lot of evidence and examples of young people stepping up, stepping out and saying things, important messages and getting involved. And these are young people that aren't even old enough to vote. So to me, if these young folks from like Keller ISD who were on the pod last week with EJ, knowing that they cannot vote for things, are willing to get up and, and protest, do marches, speak to the leaders that are making decisions that impact their daily lives, come on podcasts, support each other and try to make things better for the students that they go to school with, that they see struggling on a daily basis. And the young folks that showed up at the Fort Worth ISD meeting this past week to bring out the, the terrible loss of a young child who was bullied in school. If these young people who don't even get to vote can educate themselves and stand up and take the time out of their lives when they should just be able to be kids, the rest of us should take a page from that and start educating and informing ourselves and putting in the same amount of effort and work. And then also following it up with voting since we are all old enough to do so.
Very well said. We're glad you're back. The eight one seven podcast is so excited to continue the movement. Eight one seven, gather, come to one. They're such a good time. Uh, join the Discord community. All of it will be in the description and we'll see you guys next time on the eight one seven podcast.